I am going to call the North Borough School Committee meeting to order pursuant to Chapter twenty-two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-two, an act relative to extending certain COVID nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on July sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. This meeting will be conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance by members of the public will be permitted. Thank you all very much for pivoting tonight to going virtual. My daughter and I contracted COVID, so PSA announcement for everybody, even if you have one symptom test, because this strain is very mild in the sense that you do not need to have multiple symptoms to test positive. So that's just my personal little PSA. You're welcome, Mary Ellen. We are starting, present, we have a quorum, the only one not in attendance yet is Lauren, and we will clock her in when we see her pop in. First on the agenda is audience sharing. Are there any audience members? You can raise your virtual hand. I closed my participant screen, so. Give it a second for people to jump back into how this works. All right, seeing no hands raised, we will move on to the new business. I'll turn it over to Superintendent Martino for principal reports.
Sure, so I'd just like to share with the committee and the community that I think we had a wonderful start to the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And I just want to compliment all of members of the leadership team and principals for all of the detailed work that goes into launching a new school year. It's a tremendous effort. And when they do it well, those little details go unnoticed. So I just want to thank the principals for their hard work and efforts over the past many months launching the year. And at this time, I will turn over to the principals for principals' report, and we'll begin with Michelle Carr.
Thank you. First, we'd like to thank Bud Richardson, Justin Gerard, John Perosi, and Dave Anastas for all their work on the building over the summer. It looks really great, and it was ready for students and staff. Also like to thank Nicole DeAngelis for her tireless work on our master schedule, student and teacher schedules, and everything else needed to prepare for a smooth opening. And we would also like to thank our PTO for providing a wonderful welcome back breakfast for all of our staff on August twenty-ninth. And at this time, I'd like to introduce our new assistant principal Gretchen Bean, and thank her for partnering with me throughout the summer and over the past weeks as we prepared to welcome staff and students back into the building.
Thanks, Michelle. So our students have settled into the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four school year at Melican. We welcomed thirty-one new students over the summer and twenty students withdrew. September is shaping up to be a busy month for us. Interscholastic sports signups are taking place this week, and the seasons will begin soon. Additional before and after school activities will start over the next several weeks. And we are very excited to be bringing back our sixth grade overnight field trip. We have our ecology school virtual information meeting tomorrow night at six-thirty. Our sixth graders are going to participate in the overnight trip in early November. And lastly, we will be hosting our two thousand and twenty-three open house next Thursday on September fourteenth from six to eight. And school picture days are scheduled for the following week, September twenty-first and twenty-second.
So I just wanted to make sure I was not muted. So it's nice to be back here. It's amazing how, you know, you blink and we're back at the beginning. I think teachers, students, families, we're all excited about getting back to school. The kids really look forward to who's going to be in their class this year and getting used to all the routines. So it went really well, everybody. There was definitely that excitement in the air this year, which was great to see. I'd like to also thank Bud Richardson and Jose Baez, who he is our new head custodian at Peaslee. The building is looking really great this year, so we'd like to thank both of them for that. I also wanted just to mention that we do have a lot of calendar of events that start right off in at Peaslee. Number one is we will have our first all-school meeting next Friday. We all look forward to walking in the Apple Fest parade. Students are thinking about their gear and what they're going to do, and the buzz about the parade and how they catch candy and throw candy. So everybody's really excited about that. Our fifth graders will have their, they had their informational session with the band instrumental program, and they will be gathering this upcoming week to learn a little bit more about the process of starting band lessons. I think, you know, obviously, the other principals will have a lot to share, but I just wanted to say we're really just very excited to all be together. Our principalships and our teams have worked really nicely this summer collaborating, so it's just, we're really excited about a great year.
Thank you. Next is Principal Callahan.
Hi, thank you, Greg. I also wanted to echo everyone else's sentiments. I would like to thank Bud Richardson as well as Maria and Erin at the Lincoln Street School. The building was beautifully manicured throughout the summer. We also had a student worker, Manny Rojas, who was a former student over at Melican, and he helped the crew all throughout the summer inside and out, so I appreciate that. We are also off to a great start, very exciting. On Thursday, the first day of school, we had our new polar bear, Pat the Polar Bear greet the students and staff and families as they get off the bus or parent drop off. We also had Officer Martin on the premises greeting kids and just showing some excitement. We have several events coming up, as Dr. Cokely mentioned. We have the Apple Fest Parade, which does organize at the Lincoln Street School around one o'clock, so that's coming up on Sunday. We also will be hosting the pancake breakfast at our cafeteria on Sunday as well. On the twenty-first of September, we're going to have our open house from six-thirty to eight. And we also have school pictures coming up on the twenty-ninth, so we have a lot of new and exciting events happening. One, we did started two new traditions at Lincoln Street this year, one being we had all-school assemblies for each grade and where I was the speaker, and we just presented on our expectations of the cafeteria and the hallways and recess, and that was a nice way to show our support of our core values. And then another nutrition new tradition, we're going to start tomorrow, or Friday, on Friday, we're going to do something called the clap in and a clap out. We will clap in our kindergarten students, and they will walk around the four hallways of the school and as we welcome them as our newest and youngest polar bears. And then in June, we'll have a clap out for our fifth grader. So the staff was really excited about that. So we are off to a great start. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, my principal colleagues. They have really helped me along the way, transition from middle school life to elementary. I have really learned how to open a lot of milk cartons this week.
Thank you, Jen. And next is Principal Mahoney.
Okay, hi, everybody. So I'm going to try not to echo too much what other folks said, but very happy to be here. Also, very appreciative of our custodial staff, Bud Richardson, Pam Banks, and Corey Farley for their hard work over the summer in the building. The building looks absolutely amazing. And just a huge shout out to our faculty and staff for all of the greetings that they gave to our students creating that warm and welcoming environment where the students really looked forward to coming back to. And really, they've taken me under their wing as well, so really appreciative of that. And also my principal colleagues and central office administration, so really appreciate that. And then also the PTO for our before-school professional development. The PTO actually provided lunch for our faculty and staff, and then also Amazon gift cards to supplement for any classroom supplies for the teachers, so that was very generous. In terms of some curriculum and instruction, a huge shout out to Emily Emery Ward, our reading specialist, and Leana Parsons, our ELA curriculum leader. We're actually launching Wind Wisdom, our ELA, our new ELA curriculum. So we're starting Module Zero this week, and they have been instrumental in the launch of this. So that's pretty exciting for us. And then Emery has also worked with Meg Kelty to organize our beginning of year gibble screeners for literacy. So over the next, starting next week, actually, Emery alongside some classroom teachers will be gibbling our students, and we're going to look at that data, examine the data, and try to identify different instructional practices for classrooms. And then also literacy interventions based on the data analysis. One of the things that our students are really excited about is ST MAP and Gigi the Penguin. We're hopefully going to have a surprise visit from Gigi over the next couple of weeks because my understanding is there is a school, one of the elementary schools in Southborough that actually won the Gigi costume at one of the ST MAP events over the summer. So we're really looking forward to celebrating that. There's a couple more updates at Proctor School. Our multilingual learning program has been very busy. Leana Parsons, who's our ELD teacher, has actually met with nineteen new families that are new to our Proctor community. And what she shared with me is she's really been able to have really nice conversations with families and learn a lot about their traditions, their culture, and really help them make that connection between home and school. And then I also wanted to say that we have a second CASL classroom this year at Proctor, and that's been going really well so far. CASL stands for Collaboration for Autism Spectrum Teaching, Learning, and Excelling. We actually onboarded two new lead teachers, Mr. Kevin Glick and Mrs. Wendell Lawton. They've been doing great, and I've connected with them and many of the aides in the program. And basically, what they're all sharing is the feeling of each classroom is that of kindness and collaboration. It just feels like a really good place for all of our students to learn together. And then, as Dr. Cokely shared, we also had our band instrument demonstration for our fifth graders. And our librarians across the district have started a reading challenge across all schools. So we're looking forward to participating in that as well. And then also the upcoming events, of course, the Apple Fest Parade for Sunday. We have our PTO back-to-school party on Wednesday, the thirteenth with DJ Mike, so I'm excited about that. And then we have our upcoming open house on the twenty-first, and I think that's it for Proctor.
Thank you. And lastly, Principal Bell.
All right, I'll try not to repeat too many different things, but I'm just giving everybody else the way. We had an amazing start to the year. I want to shout out technology. Our technology has been awesome to share everything from working and Ben Tracy and Owen and their whole team has been a wonderful job of supporting our teachers and making sure that we have our devices they need and stack up what they need.
John, John, we're having a hard time hearing you, I think, or maybe it's just me, but I'm not sure. I'm not sure if you're getting close. Now we can. Thank you.
Okay, so you want me to start over, Greg? All right, so I just want to say thank you, especially to our technology helping to have a new start to the year. And like everybody else said, custodian crew, making sure the buildings look amazing. Zee had some work done on our back entryway, which looks amazing. We have new concrete board, and it looks almost brand new out there, and the grass was replanted, and it looks wonderful. So thank you, everybody, to help make that happen. Like everybody said, we're implementing a new ELA curriculum, and our teachers have done a wonderful job of preparing and planning. And a lot of them did work over the summer meeting in teams to make sure that they were ready for their first day of school. And we're getting into those lessons now, and it's exciting to see the learning kids doing. It's a totally different format than what we've used in the past, but it's going to make a great impact on our kids, so we're excited about that this year. And then finally, tomorrow, we're going to have our first community meeting of the year, and these will have the favorite thing for me at least in that school. But we're going to add something onto that if they're new, and we're going to save for families. And so after our community meeting altogether, we'll break down families. And so each staff member has a family of mixed age kids, and they have mixed age kids and their families. And during these families, we see everything, we're often able to reinforce our concept, social motion of curriculum content, perseverance, and those bullying and things like that. Tomorrow, the kids are going to name their families, and they're going to make sure that their kids and their families, when they see staff members and students throughout the building, at other times, they can do their, their handshake, disagreeing. But we're excited to help continue build that community on the Z. It's going to be a great school year, and like many principals have said, I love the collaboration that we're having. I enjoy our meetings and getting together and collaborating and communicating. We have a strong team, and I'm excited about what we're going to do together this year.
Thank you, John. And Kelly, would you like us to move into director?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you so much to all the principals. It was great hearing about everything. I did actually hear about Pat the Polar Bear, and everybody wanted to know, who was Pat? That's going to be the big question. So I don't know if you guys are keeping a tight lip, but that was the big question that I heard.
You can't disclose that. Can't disclose it, Kelly. We're going to keep it for a secret, but that was all supported by the PTO. They really helped us with a great roll-up, so thank you. That was fun.
Kelly, it could be any one of us.
I know, that's what I said. How tall were they? But no, thank you so much. I appreciate you guys all tuning in tonight and coming tonight and pivoting last minute and going virtual. I'm okay with the principals stepping off at the meeting if you so need to. I don't know, Greg, if you need anybody to stick around.
Yeah, I think that they have planning to do for tomorrow morning, so.
Yeah, yeah. Get the ice in, you know, sit in a nice bath before you go to school, you know, and it'll be a good day. So thank you all very much for coming.
Thank you. Nice to see you.
Thank you. Good night. Thank you. Okay, yeah, Greg, so do we want to move to ELD?
Yeah, sure. So just a general comment on all the work that takes place over the summer. So many of our faculty and staff and directors don't necessarily have student response, direct student responsibilities over the summer. However, our student support services and our ELD teams do, and they have done a terrific job kind of leading that work and inviting kids over the summer and continuing the learning for many of our, many of our students. So I just want to thank Helene and the team for the team's work around the ESY program, and then Rhoda and her team for the multicultural learner program that Rhoda led. So I will turn it over to Helene. So Helene is not new to our district.
Sorry, one interruption. I just wanted to make note for the record-keeping at six-thirty-three, all committee members were present, so.
Perfect. Thank you, Kelly. So Helene is not new to our district. She has served as a speech and language pathologist in North Borough, a team chairperson in South Borough, and for the past three years, three-plus years, she has been serving as Assistant Director of Student Support Services. And she also leads our ESY program, so Helene will provide an update.
Hi, everybody. So this summer, we had a hundred and ninety-four students across all three districts, preschool to twenty-two years old, attend our ESY program. That includes students who were in the program during the day, and then also students who just came in for walk-in services such as speech-language therapy, occupational therapy, physical therapy, or some specialized reading work. We did house the program at Algonquin again this summer, so that involved moving some of our programs out of their current spaces and into the high school. And it was a very successful program, and there are many people to thank for their contributions, including the custodial staff who continues to welcome, welcome us into Algonquin each summer. Our central office administrative team who helped with everything from hiring through transportation, finance, the technology team, Mary Ellen in, you know, coordinating the nurses for the summer, and of course, our teachers who dedicated their summer to the students that, you know, they love. And also a special thanks to our site coordinator, Kelsey Rondo. She was the coordinator in the building every day, in charge of the day-to-day events of the building, and she just does a really outstanding job. So having the programs housed all in one building again allows us for, it allows us to combine our specialized resources and efficiently run service delivery. So this includes having all of our nurses in one place, having our physical therapists, speech-language pathologists, occupational therapists not have to travel between buildings, which really maximizes their ability to spend their time with their students each day. In terms of our numbers for staffing, one of our goals each summer is to really have more and more of our own staff work in the summer and devote some of their time. And this year, we did have an increase in our staff working in the summer. So we hired twenty-three district staff for teachers. So this includes regular ed teachers, special education teachers, occupational therapists, speech-language pathologists, physical therapists. And then we had six external hires who we hired to act in those roles as well. Our nursing staff, we had three district nurses who worked for us during the school year, cover the duration of the program. In terms of our educational support professionals, we had forty-seven district staff, and we hired thirty-two externally to help us out in the summer. Some of our external ESPs are people who work for us only in the summer. They have other jobs in different districts during the school year, but they continue to return to us each year. And then some of our external hires are now currently working in many of our buildings around the district as they were hired for positions at the conclusion of the year, of the summer. And then lastly, our ESY parents survey will be sent out to parents at the end of the week so that we can receive their feedback.
Thank you, Helene. All right, next is Rhoda Webb with the multicultural learner program.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank so many people that were involved in our summer program. Stacy Mahoney, Dan Webster, and the custodians at Proctor for letting us host our program there. Keith Lavoy and Sheila Hanna for setting up the buses for our students. Megan Wickstead was the coordinator. She's an ELD teacher in South Borough. Sandy Bunsek for developing the curriculum and of the program. And then we had seven teachers and four ESPs who worked diligently to bring learning to life, and Sue Berger, who's the Zee school nurse and was part of our program. So we had the children on the dates of August seventh to the tenth and August fourteenth to the seventeenth from eight forty-five to one forty, eight forty-five AM to one forty-five PM. And we had a total of sixty-nine students, and out of those sixty-nine students, forty-four were from North Borough. So our students this year who participated in our summer program delved into the topic of financial literacy. We built a community of learners who all worked towards a culminating project on the very last day. Our first through third grade students use literature and hands-on activities to learn about needs, wants, goods, services, and money. Our fourth and fifth grade students examined aspects of being a consumer. They also used literature and hands-on activities to practice using money, and they learned how advertising and other factors impact their choices. They also wrote their own advertising commercials and built their own businesses. Our middle school and high school students, we had a group of six to twelve grade students together, learned about entrepreneurs, and they took a product from an idea to its eventual creation by first serving the interests of our younger students who were their consumers. We celebrated our learning in an authentic Market Day experience in the cafeteria the very last day. Our middle and high school students marketed and sold their products to our younger consumers who used the opportunity to apply their accounting and knowledge to an authentic shopping experience. And some of the products who were made by the secondary students were hand-sewn, hand-sewn coin wallets made out of plastic bags, which were cut into pieces and melted together, pencil holders, magnets from bottle caps, origami, original art pieces, slime, clay, miniature animals. And there were also arcade games made by our fourth and fifth grade students. Another highlight that we brought back this summer, and we're thrilled about, is that all our students went on a college visit as part of the program. The college this year was Anna Maria College, who prepared a presentation and tour for our secondary students, and another one for our elementary students. And everybody then had lunch in the caf- And everybody then had lunch in the cafeteria. And that experience allows all students to be able to visualize and see themselves as belonging to college. Um, and later this year, when I do the, the multilingual learner presentation, um, I will be including photos of the summer experience. So definitely a highlight of our summer.
Rhoda, can you also speak to um, some of the new families um, to our district? Who are we, and the students who are placed at Z School?
Yeah, so we, we've had a wonderful opportunity to welcome uh, students um, to our district. And with a team of ELD teachers um, and working very closely with Mary Ellen Duggan. Um, we got to know the families, we um, and, and the students' educational background. We um, were able to um, find out more about the students and welcome them into our schools. There are sixteen students in Northborough, uh, six at um, um, six at Z School, four at middle school, and then six at, at Algonquin. So sixteen in total. Um, ten in, in the district of Northborough. It's been a wonderful experience. It's been a partnership of working very closely with many different organizations and especially with Mary Ellen Duggan. Um, and um, Z School, um, Malacon and Algonquin have welcomed the students in our schools who are adjusting very nicely.
Mary Ellen, do you wanna um, add any additional information? Cause uh, Mary Ellen has been working very closely with um, the families and making sure the students have what they need to be prepared for school.
Well, I don't think so. I think there was a lot of hands-made-to-light work and we got them everything they needed in record time. And Rhoda and her team during the summer came and interviewed the students and made them feel welcome. They were so excited to come to school. The bus routes got there. Everybody got on the bus. And it's just wonderful to see their excitement about coming to school, so.
All right, thank you. All right, next for updates, we have uh, assistant superintendent Movo Way and he'll provide the transportation and the capital plan update, um, projects update.
Did anybody have any questions for Rhoda or um, Helene? Any other school committee members?
We just congrats on the program. That sounds incredible to get kids into kind of a, a design, production, selling space at that appropriate, that age. And then others into being able to wrap their heads around, you know, participating in a, in an open transactional marketplace. I think that's, that's incredible. I also just wanna say to everybody who was involved that getting the folks um, who are new to our community settled with the programs and resources that they needed was amazing to watch. I mean, I was a bit on the periphery, but it was, it was spectacular. So just, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm fine with you um, ladies leaving also if you need to.
Although we have a very exciting agenda, um, the most exciting parts are after your part, so.
That's true. You might wanna stick around.
And this is the highlight right now. So why don't we dive into buses? Cause that's always everyone's favorite first day of school topic. But um, honestly, thank you for the chance to update you on um, the transportation, the busing for the district. Honestly, we're off to a, a great start, um, best start in years. Uh, and it is really anchored on the fact that we have all seventeen of our drivers. All seventeen of the Northborough buses have a regular driver and we do have a few spares on each given day, depending on the circumstances that arise, which is already, already proven to be very, very helpful in the first four days of school. That doesn't mean that there's still work to be done. Uh, there are many routes that still need adjusting. We're getting great in, uh, input from families and students about the performance. And the drivers are working very closely with Sheila Hannah to make those adjustments. And we do see that kind of pro- progress unfolding in the next um, days and weeks ahead. So we will be making those adjustments as needed. And if any significant changes occur, we will be communicating that uh, with enough time to make the adjustments accordingly. One of the uh, kind of the rises in participation for this start of the school year is the desire to use the bus tracking app, Where Is My Kid? Quite possibly the worst name for an app ever, but still, uh, it does the job when it works. At present, I learned this afternoon that it is not working. NRT is having trouble tracking the buses and we have received a number of complaints. Um, but I will be sending out a communication once I learn more about when that will be uh, back up and running with more consistently, consistently. Uh, it seemed to be working for the first two days uh, and then have dropped off in effectiveness since. So I think that's, we kind of had a, a false start a little bit. So we're hoping to get back, that back on track um, a- as soon as possible. But really, I couldn't reiterate enough the importance of uh, parent and driver feedback in the process. You know, sometimes looking at a route on a computer screen or looking at a sheet is one thing. But then actually how the route is performing or the students are having the experience is also important and things we take into account. So it is a, a year-long journey. Um, we do hope to uh, make some adjustments in the next days and weeks ahead, like I mentioned, and communicate out accordingly. But so far, we are off to a uh, very strong start. Um, but still, there is work to be done. Is there any questions about busing? I know we've, we've had long conversations before, but it's be happy to open up the floor to that.
Why not name it, where's my bus versus where's my kid? You know, that's just to me is like the first like, but you know.
Honestly, Kelly, it is a phenomenal question. And as soon as they told me the name of it a couple of years ago, I had the same reaction. So uh, I, I, I do think that the parent company of NRT is the one that owns the app. Um, so I hope they have the ability to make the adjustment once uh, once it is worth the while. But uh, when it is working, there's nothing better. I hear, I get great feedback on it when it's working well, and I'm certainly told when it's not working. But we don't manage it as the district that is done solely through uh, NRT and they have a specialized email address to troubleshoot for families. So we're working with them closely. And like I said this afternoon, I was told it hasn't been working well, but should be online by early next week. So I wanna learn more about that and then get a communication out to family so they know what to expect.
I mean, I'm sure if any, any of the other school committee members are like me, you've heard something already about transportation. But the one thing that I did hear was that um, the central office staff has been amazing and responsive. So um, you know, it's not flowing right, the buses aren't right, the drivers aren't right. But at least the staff is on top of it and is at least helping guide the family. So I appreciate all the hard work um, from you guys doing that.
Absolutely. And you know, it is um, you know, it is expected for the first few days to not, to not be perfect. We have a, a number of unused stops, uh, people's transportation situations change from year to year. So we gotta keep that kind of updated and that does help us uh, along the way to improve efficiency. But uh, Sheila Hannah has done a great job. You know, she, this was her first start of the year. She began with us in October of last year, so she never had the first day of school experience. So this was her first run-through and it's only gonna get better from here.
And she's still here, right? So that's, that's a positive, right? So.
She's stuck around, yes.
Yeah. Kristen?
Kristen.
Thanks. Yeah, thanks for all your hard work. I know that's always the first topic, the first day of school, right? The buses all over moms, Northborough moms and everything else. Um, I just had a couple of questions, um, or I was hoping, I guess you could expand on how the bus routes are made. Um, so in Northborough, every student has assigned a bus stop, right? And um, at one point I had thought that kindergartners always got their own bus stop. But then there were some questions um, that other parents had about that. I wasn't sure that that was true. Or I'm just hoping you could tell me more about how that's created, the routes and what, where the bus stops are.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll, obviously, there's a lot of historical um, stops that uh, do, do get reused and recycled. But we do try to make uh, adjustments on a year-to-year basis, based on, you know, um, families' usage of the stops. And when it is a stop that we can move, whether it is because the, the child is young or no other families are utilizing it but one, we too try to make those adjustments. So it's uh, clo- closer to the home. So that analysis starts in the spring, really looking at when our twelfth graders exit and bringing online our kindergarten, kindergartners as they register. We true try to start working on those as early as the spring. Um, and then see where we need to make adjustments. And that type of work happens in collaboration with NRT over the summer. They'll provide us some feedback. And then we do share the routes with the drivers in early August to get a sense of, of where we are. And then we do work on that pretty progressively. I would say the changing of the, the, the bus routes is not just like a single um, act that's done or a task that's complete. It's an ongoing process as we learn more about it. So it's a little more fluid than people think. It's not just, oh, this is the bus stop and this is where it's gonna be forever. We do take, you know, account a lot of different factors when, when building the routes.
Keith, can I just add one comment to, just to, can you just elaborate on TransFinder and, and the software we use at the office?
Yeah, that's a good point, Greg. So the other thing is that uh, we do utilize uh, TransFinder Plus, which is a pretty robust program that is anchored in uh, GPS functioning. So every student, once their address is added through Power School, it does filter to TransFinder and it actually creates a single geo-code. So every student that is routed is geo-coded is the word, which then allows it to align with their school, their bus route, and then their bus stop. It's not a perfect science. Sometimes kids are double booked and things like that. But it does help us make some of those decisions, which ultimately build, build out on the routes. And then we have to do a lot of, a double checking uh, to make sure that they are accurate. Like, you know, students aren't always geo-coded in the right spot. They might be geo-coded, but it's down the street because it's a new build that occurred um, in a neighborhood or something like that. So it isn't, it isn't a hundred percent foolproof, but it certainly helps us and takes the human error element out of it as we're building routes for the upcoming year.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
You're welcome, Kristen. Shall I move on to capital projects?
I just, um, do wanna talk briefly about kindergarten students, Keith.
Oh, yes. And so um, yes, you, you are correct. Uh, Kristen, I have heard that, that rumor as well, but unfortunately, it is, is a rumor. Um, we do try to give uh, preference to our younger students to make sure that they don't have to walk a, a greater distance than, than needed to get to the bus stops. But we do not provide um, you know, door-to-door service for our kindergarten students. It would be impossible to do that. All right, capital fund. All right, so the two main projects, Principal Bell did, did mention one earlier. We do appreciate the town of Northborough's support uh, for the Z uh, school rear entrance. Um, that was something I experienced firsthand when I was the interim principal there for a few months. And, and the in- interruption that that provided uh, to uh, families exiting the DRIM entrance at Z. Uh, fortunately, in a nice collaboration with the town, we did some proper engineering, worked with Becky on the proper procurement, and we were successfully able to complete the project in time for school. Granted, the new grass hasn't grown in yet, but the, the cement is in place and the proper egress um, i- is available. And if you haven't had a chance to take a peek, I do have a, a photo. I'm wondering if people would like to see it or, what do you think, Kelly? Okay, if you give me a minute, I had it up and then I close it, of course. But really, this was a nice collaboration. Wanna thank Bud Richardson for uh, his efforts. Um, he did a very nice job. Uh, you know, working with the contractor, getting things complete. And a huge thank you to Becky and her team for the, for the procurement. But here are the wonderful pictures of the uh, Z School. Can you see it? Good. So as you can see here, we did, um, this was, this had to be properly engineered. And the thing I'm most thrilled about is the egress that it provided rate uh, when it meets the parking lot. That is now a smooth surface, you know, for anyone from, you know, teachers wheeling carts out for different activities to someone in a wheelchair being able to access without any type of interruption. And then it is a very smooth uh, pathway rate to the rear entrance. So we are excited and do appreciate the town's support for this project.
It's so nice. We, we did um, see that on our tour of how beat up, beat up it was, you know? So to see the finished product is nice to see how it got corrected.
And, and the engineering is really there so that it should, should last us a very, very long time. So we're excited for this. And um, I know Principal Bell and the, the teachers are thrilled to have it in place. The other project I wanted to update everyone on is the uh, Proctor roof uh, replacement. Um, I've also very appreciated the town for their support of this project. Um, if you recall, we did have to go out for a, a second procurement to kind of get aligned appropriately for this. And it did work out uh, over the summer months. And we were able to contract with um, Cape Way Roofing Systems Incorporated out of Westport, Massachusetts. Uh, they are the contractor that was selected and we are in a contract with them to have them replace the uh, flat roof at the uh, Proctor School. We do have a meeting with them scheduled for this Friday to get in deep about the schedule. I know the schedule for the roof replacement was included in your packet. Greg, thank you for doing that. And I'm going to be uh, fine-tuning that with the contractor on Friday and certainly working very closely with Principal Mahoney on any type of interruption that may occur at the Proctor School. But we're really hoping for uh, a minimal interruption when, when it comes to the construction. And we'll certainly keep you posted as things, as things progress. But I do get, look forward to meeting with the contractor on Friday and then providing more information to the community as, as it becomes available.
Keith, do you wanna just touch upon um, why it hasn't been done so far? Because I know originally when we pushed for it to happen back in April, I know why. But figured maybe the community as a whole, if you wanna just briefly summarize why it hasn't happened over the summer like we originally anticipated.
Sure. Well, the approp- the um, the appropriated funding that we did gain during, during the process of uh, of town meeting and certainly with the support of, of the selectmen, brought us to a, a position of having um, one point seven. I believe, Becky, is that accurate? One point seven million? And one point seven million, which came through uh, the reports that we received uh, prior to, you know, asking for that um, allotment of money to replace the roof. What came to be in those months that passed is that there was a significant increase to the cost related, you know, to the replacement. And the bids that we got in through the first round were, were over budget. So once we made the necessary adjustments, we did put the project back out to procurement for a second time. And we were successful in getting a, a contractor that will meet all the requirements that we had stipulated uh, within, within the budget that we have set. So we're very fortunate to be in that position. Greg?
So I just would, um, just to comment on that, that the project was funded out of the, what's the fund again? It's um,
ARPA.
ARPA, thank you. So.
Sorry.
Was ARPA, we were hoping to get the, as Keith indicated, um, procurement, the procurement process took much longer than we had hoped. But um, we are in a good place at this time.
Bryce?
Keith, I'm just wondering if you can talk a little bit about uh, what needed to change in order to get the bids back into budget alignment? Uh, what, if any, are gonna be the disruptions to a general school day during construction? And how will that be communicated to parents? Yeah, if you could just touch on those briefly, that'd be great.
Well, I do hope to learn a lot more about that on, on Friday, Bryce, and then be able to, to share that out, obviously, review with Greg and, and everyone to, to make sure that we have a minimal interruption. I, I don't know the, the types of things. I think what they're going to do is try to avoid any of the large noise-making uh, type activities to uh, after school or even um, before school, if able, but not too early. So there's a fine line of when, when to do those sort of things. What I'm understanding is that it's going to be um, a noise disruption for a couple of days. But then the majority of the project is actually something you don't even know they're on the roof, getting it done. That's what I have heard anecdotally, but these are the questions I have for the contractor on um, on Friday.
And then communication.
All right, can you just, so, so, so the, the communication piece of that? And then also what needed to change in the bid in order to get it back to the budget? And then I guess I'm gonna add on top of this. What material, given the age of the school, is going to be removed? And how will it be contained in a way that is safe for all the staff and students?
Well, there is no um, th- there's no more worry with the material. All, all of that is uh, um, and of a non-toxic uh, piece. So that's gonna be taken care of pretty seamlessly. Uh, they will, will have proper um, uh, what am I thinking of? Dumpsters and the like, and the material will be removed relat- relatively, relatively quickly and seamlessly. So we're not anticipating anything on that. Like Greg had started to say, once we kind of get a feel of what the schedule is going to be and the interruption will be, that'll be part of a, of, of a communication plan uh, for, for the community and for obviously the, the Proctor School. Um, the components that need to be adjusted, there were sections of the roof that were worse than others. Um, and we were able to kind of separate that out and that did reduce the total square footage, which, which helps us with uh, getting what we need accomplished for this project.
So it's actually not a complete replacement?
No, it's not. There is a section that will not be replaced.
Lauren?
Lauren?
Thanks. Um, hi Keith. I was just wondering if um, you plan to work with Marie Allen for student support services? Just um, during those loud days that you mentioned, making sure our students with sensory needs. just during those loud days that you mentioned, making sure our students with sensory needs, you know, are are supported or moved to a quieter space?
Hundred percent. Yeah. And like I mentioned, we're really trying to avoid any of that type of loud construction to when school is not in session, and that's what I want to learn more about on Friday. So yes, absolutely, we will work with Marie Allen and her team.
Great. Thank you.
Joan?
Thanks, Kelly. My question, I have two questions, Keith. One is about the workers and about them being on the school grounds. What, and if any, interaction would they have with the students as far as using restrooms? That type of thing? And are these workers that are going to be coming through, are they Cory checked as we have parents that come in?
Yeah, as part of the contract, there's a couple of things. One, they will have a porta potty for you, so they will not have need access to the building. And the second is they all are required to be Cory'd and Sory'd before they're on campus.
Okay.
And we don't anticipate any interaction, but if so, this is a standard precaution that we take with all of our contractors that spend time in our schools.
Okay. And would they, let's say, I know always, you know, at the beginning of school, you have the different drills, let's say, like a fire drill. If there is a fire drill when they are working, are they going to be participating in it also?
Absolutely.
Okay, which I hope that they would to do a good role model for the kids.
Yes, I think that'd be great. Yes, and I I think they should, and I will absolutely, that's a great point, and I will review that with the contractor on Friday.
Yeah, and they have to get in a straight line, and they can't talk.
You got it. We'll we'll review the rules.
Okay. And then my last comment is, I hope that, and I'm sure that you're going to do it, and also the principal, is do communication with the parents to keep them updated so that there is a communication link that is as soon as it gets started, so the parents will know what's happening by day, you know, weekly or daily, whatever it is, because I think it's most important instead of parents, you know, going on to social media and trying to finding out that way about what's going on or who the rumors are with the kids, the parents can squash some of the rumors. So thank you very much, Keith, for your update. I appreciate it.
My pleasure. And absolutely, we will definitely take care of that with Principal Mahoney.
All right, considering no more questions. Lastly, we have Dr. Reinhorn, who will provide an update around professional development, teaching and learning updates, as well as new teacher orientation.
Thank you. I am going to just, I have a few slides. I I do well with visuals, so. Um. Let's see. Are you able to see the slides? Okay, thank you, Kelly. And so just a few brief updates on the start of school from the teaching and learning and professional development perspective. We whoops, I went too far. We started in late August with new teacher orientation. We do this across the three districts together, and across the three districts, we had 32 new educators at new teacher orientation and their mentors. And we use this as an opportunity for them to meet each other, to meet school and district leaders, and to learn about the district. One of the things we really emphasized during that day is that we are a mission and values-driven organization, and so we spent some time with them, really looking at our mission, our vision, which is our portrait of a graduate and our core values. In addition, so I wanted to thank Nancy Bissett, who does a lot to help organize this day. But we also are grateful for the association leaders who welcome the new faculty and meet with them on that day. And then also the technology team, Julie Doyle and Ryan O'Leary and their teams, made sure that by the time teachers left new teacher orientation, they had their devices in hands, their key cards in hands, and had had a chance to log in. You know, learn how to take attendance in Power School, if that's one of their responsibilities, and do some of those basic aspects of the job. Also, thank you to the mentors. Many of our experienced educators, not only on that day, but throughout the year, play a really important role in creating a smooth transition for our new members of the community. So we are very excited about all the contributions that these new educators will be making. And the following week, we kicked off the year with our welcome back and had, for the first time, three days in August, or maybe not the first time ever, but a new shift in the calendar. I did put on this slide that some of our professional development was a continuation of work that started in the spring, particularly with some of our curriculum areas that where we're bringing in some new programs. So in the spring, we had done Witten Wisdom Professional Development with our K through five teachers, which is our new English Language Arts curriculum, and we had spent time in the middle school. And I have a typo there. It's not grades five through eight, it's grades six through eight with our Carnegie Blended Math Program, which I'll talk a little bit more about. So with our district welcome in August, we had Dr. Adolf Brown, otherwise known as Doc Brown, and that is a picture of him on the slide. He was our welcome keynote speaker and really started us off with an incredibly positive, motivating introduction to the year. And there is a lot of buzz about the many messages that he shared with us following our time, which it is really a very special time to have the entire set of employees from all the schools, all the different roles together. Following that, we moved to our more school-based launch of the school year. That included, at the middle school level, there was some work with Carnegie Math led by some of the teachers. At the high school level, there was site-based work to launch their school year. Some of the work at the elementary level went across schools where, for example, Megan Kelty, our ELA coordinator, worked with all elementary teachers on Witten Wisdom at the same time, virtually. We also had ST Math, professional development that was school-based but consistent across the schools. Teachers engaged in their annual training modules. We had the launch of our UDL Explorers Cohort Two. That was actually not in the three days, but in the week prior. So there was a lot of different professional development going on. Overall, the feedback that we have received is that that extra day at the beginning of the year really gave people more of a chance to kind of settle into the work, get on the same page, and feel really ready for the return of students. So that was a very positive start to the year. Just a few curriculum and instruction updates. This is really just highlighting some of the things that are a little bit newer that are happening, and none of these are new to you. Well, not none, most of these are not new to you, but just wanted to remind you. At Melican, the SELF class, which is the Social Emotional Learning Foundations class, which was offered to sixth graders last year, is going to be all all three grades, sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade will participate in this class this year. As has been mentioned now multiple times, we are launching the implementation of the Carnegie Blended Math Program and have, you know, our our first visit from one of the consultants providing PD next week. And the leadership team already met with the consultant who's supporting their PD. In the middle school, we will be continuing the work collaboration between ELA and Social Studies Departments on developing some of the genocide education lessons and units that have been happening over the last couple of years. And the one piece that is new that I wanted to mention, and you'll hear more about in the future, that is sort of hot off the presses, is that Principal Carb and Assistant Principal Bean applied for a grant this summer that the department, it's actually federally funded. And it is a really snazzy title, Approaches to Addressing Student Cell Phone Usage. But really, the intents of this of this grant are, given what we know and the Surgeon General's advisory on social media and youth mental health, the Department of Education is trying to use some federal funds to support schools in either developing or revising policies and practices that help students and families address the ways we use electronic devices, particularly during the school day, but also to provide education. So we were awarded some funds, which we will formally bring to the school committee, and we will be developing some both educational and sort of phone storage strategies and things that we'll be piloting at Melican this school year. So that's something you'll hear more about in the future. At the elementary level, I think it's a good sign when we hear our principal reports, and you start hearing some of the same things, and you can hear the alignment and coherence that we have been working toward. In both at the middle and elementary level, really very grateful to our coordinators, who are helping to lead a lot of this work. The Witten Wisdom rollout is in full swing and has taken a lot of support and energy in all directions. And I was talking to a teacher this morning. It is, as as Principal Bell said, it's asking teachers and students to do things in different ways than they have in recent years. And one of the things I've heard the teachers saying is, and they're not just talking about kids, we can do hard things. And that is a lot of what's happening with implementing new things in the different schools, is that people are having to change is hard. And so there's a lot of excitement and energy, and we're really excited about what the future holds with this. So Witten Wisdom is in full swing. In math, as you know, we again have a grant to support our work with ST Math, which is going to complement our ongoing work within Vision Mathematics. So that will continue. And in the realm of social emotional learning, Second Step has been in our Northborough Schools, but at both the elementary and the middle school level with support from some grant funding, we were able to get digital access to Second Step, which is the most updated version of it in all of our elementary and middle schools. And so in the SELF curriculum and potentially across other classes that will be used at the middle school level and in the elementary level, the different schools are approaching this in different ways. But the bullying prevention lessons and other Second Step lessons will be incorporated into students' experiences across the schools. And that is our faculty, and happy to answer any questions.
Great. Thank you so much. Kristen?
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Stephanie, for that report. That was awesome. So much great stuff going on. I was wondering if you could expand a little bit on the lessons you mentioned about genocide that were being revised? If that's like what grade level is that at, are they certain topics or kind of across all topics? I imagine it a certain way, like being integrated into lessons that are already existing, but I don't know that I'm right. So I was hoping you could expand on that a little bit.
That is a great question. I will give, you know, some explanation now, and we can certainly give more details in the future. In Massachusetts, there was new legislation, legislation, I want to say now about two years ago, that mandates that we have genocide education in middle and high schools across the Commonwealth. They also, not always true, but they did actually provide funding opportunities to support this mandate. And we secured a grant that was a two-year grant. So we had some funding last year, and then we have some funding again this year that is supporting teachers in further developing work that already existed. It's been a collaboration across Northborough, Southborough, and the high school. We're using a consistent framework that looks at the stages of genocide that are, there are 10 stages. And we really, in the middle school, look at the early stages that eventually can lead to genocide. And the way we're doing that in the middle school and the sort of lessons and units of study often are, what we're trying to do is connect to existing curriculum. So this is not only through looking at the Holocaust, for example, but in cases, it might be connecting to the Rwandan genocide or, you know, other areas. And because it's looking at all the stages, some of those things are not necessarily, like the early stages can connect to lots of areas in our curriculum. So in some cases, it is happening in English Language Arts, in some cases in Social Studies, and in some cases, it's a collaboration. And it's ongoing work, but I don't, that's sort of a little bit of an introduction, and we can certainly share more in the future. Greg, you're muted, but you might have.
I'll just add quickly, too, this is a pre-K through 12 initiative. So our Algonquin Department Chair, Brittany Burns, is taking a leadership role on kind of building the coherence of this program. So it is a nice partnership between our middle schools, both in Northborough and Southborough, and Algonquin, and they've done an excellent job planning and thinking about how to do this well with students.
And sorry, the other piece I'll add to that is that one of the things the grant has allowed us to continue and to fund is having survivor visits, where survivors, or sometimes they're secondary survivors, meaning they're the children of survivors, come and speak with the children. And so that's something we did last year at at the three secondary schools, and will continue to do. And I also have really appreciated the ways that the teachers really think about sort of developmental, the developmental capacity of the children and what and how they can use these stages across the continuum to develop the understanding at the time that's sort of appropriate for those conversations. Joan, did you have a question?
Yes, I did. Kelly, is it okay? Yes, sure. Thank you for the all the information. And on the new teacher orientation, do they have mentors that they can go to throughout the year when questions may arise? Or concerns?
Yes, they do. So all of our professional educator, all of our licensed educators have assigned mentors. And depending on where they are in their licensure process, so if they are in early in their career and have not yet earned a professional level license from the Department of Education, they also participate in our induction program. So that is really targeting our newest teachers. And then the mentors, we have mentor coordinators. So there's a Northborough Mentor Coordinator, Carrie Brooks, who is a Peaceley teacher, and then she runs meetings with the mentors and the mentees and oversees the program and really supports the sort of what are, we have a mentor handbook, so it's really a structured program so that teachers have what they need in that onboarding process of joining the district, even if they are veteran teachers, so that they can, you know, join our community smoothly.
I think you could say that's a valuable piece of any program to be successful and for a teacher to be successful, is to have that mentor that they can reach out to. And the last question I have, Kelly, is that I would like to see updates onto this curriculum, if possible, especially into the math and into the Witten Wisdom and the literacy. I know that I think at the spring meetings, we had discussed, or we had, Greg, we had ironed out, you know, when curriculum presentations were going to be made. And if it if it is so that a curriculum presentation is in math or in the literacy program, I would like to look at some of these materials just to see what they are, or even do a mock lesson with us. I remember that somebody did something in the Special Ed Department. We had to go through something with a box, and and we had to put our hands into a box, and it was like sensory type of things. And it was interesting, because we got to see what the kids are doing, and it helps us to go support. And when we have to go for town meetings and to get support for the projects, because I know that these programs, you know, were very expensive, and thank you, Stephanie, for getting the grant for the Witten Wisdom. So I I think it's important, because a lot of people, parents and citizens, watch these meetings, and I think they would be interested to know what Witten Wisdom is like, and that it isn't the old anthology, that your old textbook that you used to read. It's something altogether different. So and I'd just like to see what these workbooks look like, or what are the materials that we have. So thank you very much, because we're putting a lot of, you know, expertise into it, educational and expense. So thank you very much. So Kelly, that was just my suggestion.
Thanks, Joan. I'll put it on our future agenda items, so we can discuss that during that time. But I believe we are on the process of getting a list of what we want updated and.
And I believe, Kelly, too, we, if I'm, I might be incorrect, but I think we mapped out what.
I think we mapped up for the like, the like a three-year plan type thing, so it like overflows and things like that. So we'll find that and circulate that as well, Joan.
Okay, thank you.
So, to the chair, can I just make one general comment?
Yes.
So, you know, throughout the evening, you will hear many of the wonderful things that are happening in our district. And also, the key word that keeps coming up is grants, through a grant, through a grant. So just, I just want to thank the Central Office Leadership Team. So just, I just want to thank the central office leadership team. For seeking alternative funding and over the next several meetings, you'll be approving hopefully. A lot of these grants, some of them are hot off the press, so we haven't added them to the agenda for official approval. But it's hundreds of thousands of dollars that directly will enhance what happens in terms of student learning. And all, also overall safety of, of staff and students.
Yeah, we have fifty-three thousand and change approved tonight, so. All right. Thank you so much, Stephanie. Appreciate you taking the time tonight to discuss everything with us.
Thank you.
Next on the, on the agenda is legislative update.
So just a few updates on the legislative front. The first is that the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. Is seeking public comment on the health and P physical education standards. The last time the standards were updated. Was back in nineteen ninety-nine, so over two decades ago. Mary Ellen Duggan has been working closely with the health and wellness teams to think about what impact it will have. But we are providing our own public comment. And I believe that pu- public comment is open to any citizen who would like to review and if they go to. Department of Elementary and Secondary Education's website, there is a place where they can provide input and review the draft.
That's awesome. Can we circulate that link?
Yeah, I'll put the link in maybe Tuesday's update to families.
That'd be great.
The second update really is around the FY twenty-three state budget, so it has not been officially closed out yet. The supplemental budget. Is still being reviewed and discussed. Part of that supplemental budget is seventy-five million dollars for extraordinary special education costs, as you recall in. Budget process last year, we had that fourteen percent increase on out of district placements that really impacted our overall cost for special education. So Becky is keeping her ear to the ground to see what happens with that, and we're hoping that can mitigate some of the increased costs that we did. Have to bear as a community as a result of that fourteen percent increase. So we will keep you updated. And then lastly, it did share with the committee, the M A C, M A S S joint conference information. So I believe it is the eighth, November eighth, the tenth. I, I encourage members to attend if their schedules allow. It's a great opportunity to.
Bryce, myself and Kristen, I have registered for it.
Absolutely. It's a great opportunity to network and. Those who can attend always bring back their learning to all members, so it is, it is a beneficial use of time. And that concludes the legislative update.
Great, thank you so much. Next is the solar update.
Yeah, so no shortage of solar power today, tomorrow and Friday. So. We are hoping to capture that solar power in the future and Keith will provide an update on some of our current thinking.
Yeah, isn't, isn't that true? In, in the spring of, of twenty-three, Greg and I brought together the solar feasibility group. To really try to spark some interest back in the projects that we have. If you recall, we do have a solar system on top of. Algonquin, that was the first system that we've had and it's actually proven to be quite successful for us. So. As part of that work stemming from the meeting last spring, we reached out to Select Energy of Hopkinton. They were the. They were the contractor that we worked with on the Algonquin solar project. So we re-engaged with them about the feasibility options for. The remaining schools in our district, including Algonquin, for maybe potential additional projects. They did a deep dive, a deep review. They came out and did a site visit and they have proposed a total of seven projects throughout the district. Four of which are part of the North Borough K eight buildings. So a couple of things to note on this, this is very early in the process. We actually have a follow-up meeting with them tomorrow to get a little more detail on what's being proposed. But we did want to update the committee on the things that we are thinking about. And obviously there is going to be a ton more opportunity for feedback. We got to do community outreach. We are in the infancy of, of putting these projects in, into motion. We want to keep you abreast of kind of, of where we are. And the reason why we are kind of moving with a little bit of pace is Governor Healy did support a. A grant opportunity for schools to do roof replacements. And a roof replacement would be contingent, a paid roof replacement would be contingent upon. Putting a solar system on top of that new roof, which was obviously one of the major deterrents from any type of roof solar system is. The age or the condition of the roof. So with a new roof, you can have more solar. And I think that's what has ultimately been, been decided at the state level. So. We are eagerly looking for that grant opportunity when it becomes to, comes available. And speaking of grant opportunities, that will be one we absolutely try to get into the, into the hopper for. So to prepare us for all of that, we wanted to make sure that we lined up with Select Energy on making sure we have all the projects identified. With the proper returns kind of calculated, which is an important part of looking at a solar project. So the four projects that are part of K eight. Are the Proctor Roof, obviously with a new roof that's going to be occurring in the next few weeks. That roof will be prime for solar, which is exciting. The second is the Lincoln Street School and that would be part of the metal roof only. This was part of the. Renovation project and we do have a brand new roof on there that is metal, which is a, a prime opportunity for a roof solar system. The third is the Z roof, and if you recall, the Z replacement of the Z roof is on the capital plan for North Borough. And it is something that we are very much. Wanting to secure. So that would be one that's contingent. We wouldn't be able to put solar panels on top of the Z roof. Without a full replacement. So that's something that would be anchored against the grant opportunity. And the fourth and final one is that we reviewed the Melican Middle School. And due to the age of its roof, its roof is not really suitable for a solar system, but we are looking to explore a carport. Which would be in the part of the front parking lot. And obviously that would be something that we would want to review closely and we do not have any prior experience with those types of projects. So we want to make sure to vet that entirely. But these were the four proposed projects that Select came to us with for further. Consideration. So we are looking forward to that. It is exciting to think about the next step of solar for the district. And we have a lot of steps to take, but this is certainly the, the first step in that process and we wanted to keep you abreast of what was happening. Greg, is there anything that you would add to that?
That was a great summer. Thanks, Keith.
Welcome.
Thanks.
Any questions?
Joan?
Thanks, Kelly. Keith, I have one question. When you talked about the Melican and the carport. Would you be able to tie into that? Let's see if you decide to go on that vein and go with the carport. Would we be able to tie in the paving of that parking lot?
Yes, actually Greg and I did, did bring that up as part of, we just had that top sealed not, not too long ago. But the paving of, of that area would certainly be something for consideration with any carport that would be installed throughout the district.
Okay, thank you. Because I look at that as same as the, if you're putting a solar panel on the roof, you won't have the roof in good condition. So if it's a carport. Let's get the, if we can with the town is get that parking lot done. Okay, thank you.
Through the chair too, Keith, I do have one thing to add and that is, we're also looking through this project. At adding like EV charging stations at all of our facilities. To kind of future-proof our parking lots and to make sure that, you know, we have that ability for. Parents, families and, and employees.
I thought that's where Joan was going. I was prepared to answer her with that, that response, Greg.
I, I wish I had that one. I'm, I'm thinking of the past projects that we were working with the town, you know, with the parking lot. So. But that's, that's forward thinking. I love that.
Kristen?
Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Keith, for that update. And I'm just wondering, maybe next meeting, I probably. Won't have the information on here, but I'm wondering about the Algonquin project, which he said there was solar already put on and it seems to be working well. Exactly what like the cost benefit was, obviously you're. It's way early right now to really do a cost benefit analysis for any of these particular projects, but when I have been on. You know, committees or the things that have worked on these types of projects, be it solar panels or charging stations or other things. Usually does not make financial sense. At my own school where I work, it was the roof, right? So. It was, oh, it's going to cost us twenty years to get our money back and then we're going to have to replace the whole system again in twenty years. So, no, we're not doing that. So I would just love to hear more about what happened at Algonquin and how that. Has been helpful and successful, like I said, at a future meeting or some, or some other communication if you can.
Sure, I think we can easily put something together. So it would be certainly black and white with what we've been able to do. Granted, it is in the infancy. Of it, but we've had some good returns in the last twelve months that we could, we could share.
And through the chair, I just have one more update. So I think this is my last update. I'm not sure. And that is that Keith and Becky also, also are investigating. Working with solar farms that are, that are coming online to offset our energy costs. So purchasing power from those solar farms. So schools where we can't ideally add solar easily. We still can get the benefit of green energy and getting closer to net zero. So. Becky and Keith are looking at the options and there are a few options out there. So hopefully in our next update or. In the next month or two, we'll have some more information about that as well.
But Joan wants a new parking lot, Greg. We can't. Get a new parking lot.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is approval of grants and donations. We've got four amazing donations. To our district and our schools. We have a grant, fifty thousand dollar grant for safer schools. We've got three thousand from Capio Bianco. I never, I always butcher them and I'm so sorry. Capio Bianco. Law. A hundred and fifty dollar value to a trombone. And a two hundred and fifty dollar value for a trumpet. So I will take a motion and. For approval of those grants. Greg?
I just want a quick comment on the first approval. At a upcoming executive session, we can share some of the details of, around what we're planning to use that money for with the committee.
Perfect. Joan?
Okay, I'll try to make a motion. Do you want each of these in a separate motion?
No, I think we can approve them all together.
Okay, and my second question, if these all do get approved, which I assume they will. Will a letter on behalf of the school committee through the U, Kelly, the chair, will be sent to these in thanks for these grants or donations?
I believe we always send. Letters, correct, Greg?
Yeah, I'll make sure we usually share a letter as our thank you writer. So we'll make sure we get those out.
Okay, so I will try to put all four of these in one motion. I move that we approve. The FY twenty twenty-three Safer Schools and Communities Initiative. Local Equipment and Technology Supplemental Grant Opportunity in the amount of fifty thousand. Second one, approve, I move that we approve the donation from Capio Bianco. Law in the amount of three thousand dollars to the North Borough Public Schools Free Lunch Program. Third one, I move that we approve the donation of Con Selmer Trombone for Mrs. Jean. Jen Garen with an approximate value of a one hundred and fifty dollars. And for the fourth one, I move that we approve the donation of Yamaha Trumpet for Mr. Chris Johnson. With an approximate value of. Two hundred and fifty dollars and all four of these with lots of gratitude and thanks from the North Borough School Committee.
I have a motion. Is there a second? Was that Bryce? Bryce seconded. Any discussion on this? No, seeing none. I just want to say extend a great gratitude as well. Thank you so much. Capio Bianco, I know I keep ushering you, but they are continuous. In support of our schools and our lunch program. So we thank you so much. And thank you so much for the two instruments. They will greatly help our middle, our elementary school, I'm assuming. Programs and middle school programs. And we look very forward to hearing about the. Ways we're gonna do the technology supplemental grant. So. We have to do a roll call, vote? Joan?
Yes.
Bryce? Bryce?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
And myself as a yes to approve passes unanimously. Thank you so much to all of our generous donations. Hi, hi, Toby. Sorry, I'm just saying hi to Lauren's little boy. Or is that a girl? I can't tell. No, wait. Ah, there she is. It's Tessa. Okay, moving on to old business. The two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four Subcommittee Liaison Assignments. It was in the packet. We did do our due diligence this summer and we reviewed it. It is posted. Did anybody? Have any changes for what the posting is? Greg, can you pull that up? Or? Can I share it?
Just give me, I can share it. Just give me one second.
I don't think I put anybody where they didn't want to be, but.
I'm rusty, a little bit rusty with Zoom, so.
I know.
I'm a little slow. Can you at least see my screen right now?
Yes.
Okay. Got a lot going on here.
Perfect. Alright, so we have capital planning Subcommittee would be Joan and Kristen. The bold is, means you would be the chair of the, to call the meeting into order. Collective bargaining is Joan and myself. Operational Budget Subcommittee is Bryce and myself. Policy Development is Lauren and Kristen. So those are the main. Big standing subcommittees that we'll have meetings for. And then we are liaisons to other communities. The new one that we have is the LPAC. And Bryce has expressed interest in. Being liaison to that committee. The Health and Wellness, Kristen is taking over for. Aaron. I think everything else pretty much stayed the same. I added Bryce down to the Cafeteria Food Services Special Committee, even though it's inactive, but I just figured, you know. Bryce would be a good person for that one, if it ever does come back. And I think that's about it. Greg, is there anything else that we need to discuss about it?
No, I mean, I think obviously as committees become active, you know, obviously there, as, as the year progresses, we, we might not. Have predicted a committee needing to be active, but that's always something that the committee has the ability to do. So. This list can be dynamic in terms of, like you, for example, food services being active as, as we look forward to the school year.
Bryce?
That's actually the question I had is how does the inactive committee get reactivated? And what do I need to do?
Reactivated, Bryce? Am I hearing you want to reactivate a committee?
Yeah, there are folks, there are folks in the, in the community who I think would like to participate in a. In a committee to. Do some other things within the food services program.
I agree with you. I think it was our May or June meeting where we did have some discussion about that as well, so.
It was June, yeah, that, while Mary was there. I think we, I think we would, we would do right by some of the, the citizens who have reached out to reactivate that committee.
So my recommendation, Kelly and Bryce, is if we, we connect the two, the three of us. And talk about kind of the goals, the makeup of, of the committee and then the communication plan. I think. I think that would be the next step.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Lauren?
Hi, Kelly. I'm curious for those top four committees, the standing subcommittees. Although there are only two members who sit on them, would the other three members be able to be CC'd in? With the agendas, that way we know we're just more in the. I think Cheryl does a town website for when the meetings are.
I think Cheryl has typically, um, sent out invites and things. Um, to all of us in the past.
Okay.
We can ask her if she can continue to do that.
And through the chair, Kelly, too. We, um, we do plan on having our subcommittees be virtual committees. So we'll, we'll calendar those out and then we can put the Zoom link and then we can add all of you to the invite. So even if you're not, um, on that committee, you can at least a, a, attend the webinar to kind of listen in.
Perfect.
Uh, yes, cap, thank you, Kelly. Uh, looking at an inactive one that maybe could be pushed to active, I'm not on it, but that's one that you're on, Kelly, is onto Joint Library Services. I know when I served on that one, it would be. School community member along with the superintendent, or the assist, the assistant superintendent, we would meet with, with the head librarian at Northborough. And we'd be meet maybe once every two months, but it was a good connection that went on because if there were certain projects. There, or units of study that were being done, like at the middle school or a reading project or something like that, we could communicate that with the librarian so they could pull those. Materials and have them centrally located for the students. So. I don't, I think this one was active and through the years it became inactive, but you may want to. Reach out to the librarians in Northborough and just see, even if you meet every three months or something, just to have that coordination. Going through it. It really helped for the middle school when the students would be doing their projects, doing science projects or units of study on ancient civilizations. They were aware of it, so therefore they would pull those materials and be prepared for questions or, and ready to direct the students in the right line of research for what they had to do.
Okay, thanks, Joan. Um, we will, um, reach out to. Maybe the school librarians and the public library and see if they, they might have an open communication with them. I'm not sure. So we can maybe clarify and figure that out. I do know, for example, on the, um. Supply list for the middle school, one of the requirements is a library card. So they must have some sort of a relationship with the library or rely on them somewhat. I don't know exactly what. Um, but I, I did give a little like, huh, that's an interesting supply list item that you need to have, so. Um, but we can look into that also. So thank you, Joan. Um, alrighty, moving on to superintendent reports to the committee enrollments.
So in your packet is the enrollment report as of August twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three. So over the summer. And we monitor enrollment weekly and, and try to predict and project new enrollment and withdrawals. And so I just want to highlight a couple items on the enrollment report. Um, and first that is the one kindergarten teacher at Proctor. Um, and that was a decision made based on a couple of factors. The enrollment numbers that you see on the document include all our students who enrolled in specialized sub-separate programs in our district. For example, Proctor School has students enrolled in the two castle programs. They're included in the class size here. So when you, um, minus those students who are in the sub-separate programs. Um, in K, for example, we're at twenty-one students. Um, so we're very close to the class size, um, ceiling, which is twenty. In across the district, um, in grade one, we had no open seats. Um, so decision was made to take one of our K teachers and move the teacher to grade one to provide, um. Space for new movements in grade one. Um, and then at Proctor School, we have that one K teacher, but they have a full-time ESP. And also if there is a student who, um, kind of pushes in for, uh, integration, um, they also push in with an adult. Um, so we have, um, strong support in that classroom. In our typical K classrooms in the other remaining schools, three schools, um, they have halftime ESP support, um, shared between two classrooms. So. They're actually getting a full-time ESP. Um, but overall, we're watching, um, enrollment very closely. Um, you can notice that Z School is, um, at its ceiling for enrollment in most grade levels except grade three. Um, Peaslee is also, uh, in grades one. Uh, four and five, and that is capped and then grade, um, one, two, and four at Lincoln. And then Proctor is capped at kindergarten and fifth grade. Um, so at this point in time, there was not a need to add additional staffing that was not budgeted, um, to. accommodate class size and enrollments. At the middle school level, also, we are, um, within class size, so a little more dynamic at the middle school level because scheduling becomes more complicated. It's not just, uh, an equation of X number of students divided by X number of teachers. It's really classes, um, it's mu- far more complicated. Uh, but I think Michelle Carter has done a nice job and we're, we are looking at that more closely as we prepare for the FY twenty-five budget process. But at this point in time, I think we are, uh, within the class size policy at the middle school level as well. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Sounds good to me.
Alright, there are no questions. Uh, the next item is the FY twenty-three final budget. So I think that, um, I just want to compliment, um, Becky and her leadership and the finance team. Um, for closing out a twenty-six million, seven hundred ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollar budget. Um, that is, uh, no small feat. Um, and it only, you only hear about it when it doesn't go well. So, um, Becky did a. I'll stop and I'll turn it over to Becky to give the final budget update. FY twenty-four monthly general fund expenditure report, um, and then. So Becky.
Thank you, Greg. Um, so this is gonna sound a little nerdy, but it's always a little bittersweet when you close out, um, a fiscal year budget. You've been working in it for a full year and so it's nice to put the finishing touches on it, but it's sad to leave it at the same time. Um, so as you can see that we did close out our fiscal year FY twenty-three budget with no money remaining on the bottom line. Um, some of the areas where we were over budget, um, over the course of the year, and these are things that we've really been talking about, um, at school committee meetings. And that would be the teacher salaries and that was due to the addition of two grade level teachers last year. Um, substitute teachers and nurses, um, our electricity. Um, special education transportation, and then also our tuitions for both out of district and collaborative schools. Um, another account that you'll notice that was over budget was the textbook line item. Um, and these expenses were, um. Due to the grant that I think we've talked about tonight, um, and we had spoken about it at our May meeting, and that's the Accelerating Literacy Through High Quality Instructional Materials Grant. That we received, um, from DSE in the amount of one hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred dollars. And so these expenses that you'll see on that textbook line item under, um, ELA. Were our portion of that grant that we needed to per- purchase. Um, so that is why that line is over. Um, in terms of the fiscal year, um, twenty-four monthly general fund budget that's in your packet, that is as of August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Sorry, I don't know what year I'm in. Um, so we had one million ninety-three thousand dollars remaining or three point nine one percent, um, on the fiscal year in budget. Um, I just want to compare it to where we were last year at this time, because if you remember, we had some staffing changes, um, last summer. Um, so last year we had. Two million, three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars or eight point nine seven percent remaining. So I really do want to compliment Pam Roberts, who is the Northborough Financial Coordinator and other members of the finance team. Um, who have really worked hard to, to make sure that, um, we have fully encumbered all of those expenses that we know occur on an annual basis. Um, over the summer, um, we were very busy closing out FY twenty-three, opening up FY twenty-four, and as you'll see tonight, we're getting ready to, um, begin the process for FY twenty-five as well. And so I welcome any questions on either the FY twenty-three and the FY twenty-four budget, and we will need votes for both of those, Kelly.
Alright, thank you, Joan.
Um, I'd just like to commend Becky and your staff for the great job that you have done last year and also this year and even previous years. It's, it's a pleasure to. Hear all your financial wisdom and even when you have to freeze the budgets, you've done a wonderful job and. And allowed the district to excel in, in all so many ways because of your diligence and the writing of the grants and everything. So thank you very much. Um, so Kelly, I'm ready to make, uh, two motions. I'll make the first one.
Thank you.
Um, I move that we.
Can we make it together or do we have to do it separate?
No, you can make it together because both of them be contingent upon a successful audit.
Okay, perfect. Just so that way, because we have to do a roll call vote, I figured if we can do them both.
Perfect, great. Okay, um, I move that we vote to approve until audited the FY twenty-three budget. And I'm also that we approve the FY twenty-four monthly general fund expenditure report as of August the thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Motion by Joan, seconded by Bryce. Any discussion? Seeing none, it's gonna be a roll call vote. Joan?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Bryce? Lauren?
Yes.
And myself as a yes passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Becky, for all of your hard work and your, all your support systems hard work.
The next is the MSBA update. Before, um, I turn it over to Keith and Becky to give an update. I just want to comment in general that. Um, the Mass School Building Authority has, um, two programs, Excel accelerated repair, which we learned that they paused last year. Um, due to the economy and then the core building, uh, program. That is the program that we use to, um, upgrade Lincoln Street School. And my comment really is around, you know, we really need to start thinking about what is our plan to make sure that the buildings that we do have. Are climate controlled, comfortable for teaching, comfortable for students. Um, we know that there will be, um. You know, hot days and we need to prepare for those in terms of making sure our buildings are, uh, flexible to meet the needs of our, our habitats. Um, and I'll just say that, um, we're not going to AC, you know, window AC are, are way out of this. Um, challenging time when it gets really warm. Um, we need long-term comprehensive solutions, uh, and that's something that MSBA can help us, um, look forward to. Um, so I just wanted to make that general comment and then turn it over to Keith and Becky on, um, some good information and good news for us.
Yes, thank you, Greg. Um. In early August, I believe, was the timeframe of this. We, we did learn that the MSBA would like to do a senior study visit, uh, to the, the Peaslee School. Um, this is in no means a, a full invitation into the program, but it is exciting that we were selected for the senior study. So we are currently organizing, um, the materials requested, um, and making sure that we have the proper people in place to have this, uh, working meeting with MSBA. It is a real opportunity for the MSBA to, uh, look beyond our statement of interest, uh, get into the Peaslee School, see some of its deficiencies, uh, see some of its highlights. And certainly what we're trying to achieve with any future, future project with MSBA. So at present, uh, that senior study is scheduled for October fifth. Um, and we are working with the MSBA to finalize, uh, the roster of those that will be in attendance to make sure we have the proper expertise at the table. And then do the, the document, uh, collection that is this necessary for it. So we have done this process before. We're not too far removed from. A similar senior study that we did at the Neary School in Southborough. So we feel pretty, uh, experienced with, with what this, um, uh, vis- visit will be. Becky, is there anything else you would add, uh, potentially about the? No, nothing costs anything, does it?
No, no.
This part's free.
No, I, I would not add anything, Keith. Thank you.
We did ask if they were available to visit on Friday to get the full experience of. Of people, they, they were not available.
Right.
Uh. Greg, would you like a school committee member?
Yeah, so we'll organize a visit team to kind of walk through with the MSBA, um, study team. Um, that one of the things they'd like to see is the partnership with the town officials as well. So. We'll organize that and get a communication out to you, Kelly, and you can distribute that to the larger committee.
Okay, cuz in that letter that was posted, it said October third. Is that the date that it's happening or?
I want to say, I think they confirmed October fifth.
October fifth.
Yeah.
Okay, so they changed it to October fifth. Sure, after I went and rearranged my schedule for the third.
Sorry.
Yeah, originally on their communication, it said October third. We did get a confirmation. This week, October fifth. Keith, could you just confirm?
I will double check, but I'm ninety-nine percent sure it is, uh, Thursday, October fifth.
Thursday, perfect. Alright. It's gonna be here before we know it. Joan?
Yes, when we did the Lincoln Street Project, was there such a thing as a senior study? Or is this something that's just new? You mentioned Neary.
No, they, so they, um, they typically, if they're intrigued with a particular project and want to learn more. They'll, they'll send out a team to actually tour the site and learn about the actual facility. Um, so it's a good sign because they want to get more information, but it doesn't always happen with every, um. With every project they accept. Um, for example, at Neary Elementary in Southborough, uh, we had a visit team do the same type of walkthrough. It's actually a good sign for us.
It is.
Okay, and then my second question, when it says that they like to have a representative from the town, would this be somebody who would be in the building department or what are you looking for as a town representative?
Yeah, I'm gonna reach out to the town and, um, ask who they think would be best to, uh, join the team. Um, so I will. I will reach out to, I think, the interim town administrator. Um, I believe that person will be starting shortly, so I will reach out to that person.
Okay, thank you.
Bryce?
Yeah, so I just, uh, I just want to air this out again, that as we're looking at buildings and we're talking about. Either rebuild or redesign, uh, given the across-the-board need for kind of infrastructure. Development that we are also keeping in mind what we are going to do long-term for the schooling of our K through five kids and what that looks like. Um, not just as we turn over Peaslee, but as some of the other schools that we have are in need of, of these upgrades as. Dynamics in our ecosystem are changing and our population shifts and stuff, stuff like that. So just putting that out there and curious if there's, that's just still on people's mind as these review processes take place.
Yeah, so I can add, I think there's a great comment, Bryce. Um, the, um. Great configuration study group. Um, did pause, um, it met once last year and paused to kind of let MSBA play out. Um, so if we get invited into MSBA, we enter into a feasibility phase. Um, eligibility and then feasibility. The feasibility phase really will ask us to look at, are we looking at our, uh, elementary program as a whole? Are there opportunities we want to capture in terms of the type of building we want to build? So it really is a comprehensive look, not just at Peaslee School, whatever elementary program.
And, and Kelly, I just have a quick comment, if you don't mind.
Yep.
Want to, a little pose of correction. Thank you, Becky Pellegrino. The Peaslee Senior. Uh, site visit for the MSBA is Tuesday, October third. MSBA is also coming on October fifth to look at the Lincoln Street School. They're doing a program that goes back and looks at the project they've done in the last five years. And assesses, uh, all the good, bad, uh, things that, that occurred with that. So we have two MSBA treats, uh, that week. Uh, the first will be the Peaslee School Senior Study Visit on October third and then the Lincoln Street School on October fifth. Sorry for the confusion.
Okay, so I do not have to change now. Okay.
I hope you didn't pull the plug on anything.
I was about to, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
My mistake. Thank you, Becky.
Alright, and next is, um. Um, Becky will provide kind of a budget presentation of, of what to anticipate for the FY twenty-five budget process. So kind of a high-level overview that. You know, as Becky is closing out FY twenty-three, launching FY twenty-four and actually thinking about FY twenty-five, she sits in three budget worlds. So. And we thought we'd give a high-level overview this evening, not that the school committee is unfamiliar, but the community, for the community's sake. So I will turn it over to Becky.
Thank you, Greg. I'll share my screen. Can everyone see this? Alright, excellent. Um, so as Greg mentioned, this will just be an overview of, um, what we are thinking about for the FY twenty-five bid budget process as we, um, actually begin, um.
Budget process as we um, actually begin um, to develop FY twenty-five. Um. As Greg always mentions at every um, budget presentation, everything does begin with our vision and our mission. Um, and that all of our budget decisions are driven by um, our mission to educate, inspire, and to challenge all of our students. And then also on the visions um, for all of our uh, students, that they will be collaborators, critical and creative thinkers, communicators. Socially and civically engaged, growth-oriented, and then healthy and balanced. So, as you can see, we really have already started our fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget process. Um, this past October at our NASA retreat, and that is um, for the community, that is the Northborough, Algonquin, Southborough. Administrative team. Um, we did um, start to begin the conversation about FY twenty-five. Where we reviewed um, budget goals, we looked at our mission and our vision. And then we also talked about budget expectations with our NASA members. Um, the next uh, dates that are coming up um, are really for tonight. You will um, review the budget calendar as well as the budget goals and start that process um, at tonight's meeting. And then in less than two weeks, I will be uh, distributing the FY twenty-five budget spreadsheets. Um, to all of our building principals and to our directors on Monday, September eighteenth. Um, after that, um, the principals and the directors will begin their work in terms of compiling their FY twenty-five. But behind the scenes, we will continue our work at Central Office where we will be um, reviewing uh. Any uh, preliminary budget discussions that we may have with the town administrator and um, the leadership team. Will also start the capital planning um, for FY twenty-five. Um, and then we will uh, receive the budgets back from the schools and from the directors. On October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. We did move up the dates a little bit this year to get a little bit more room um, in terms of uh, time to prepare the budget. Before we initially um, present a preliminary budget to the school committee, which normally happens in December. Um, and then in November, um, we will have an approval of our FY twenty-five capital plan as well as our budget goals. And we will um, meet for the first time as an operational budget subcommittee. And then um, these dates are not gonna look unfamiliar for people, but in December, we do a preliminary budget. Um, that is presented to the school committee. I don't know what will happen this year. However, in most years, we have had a financial trend monitoring meeting that is um, done by the town of Northborough. Um, and we will continue to fine tune it um, so that Greg can then present his recommended budget to the school committee. Um, in January, um, with a potential vote by the school committee in February on the FY twenty-five budget. Um, we then will meet with our Northborough Financial Planning and Appropriations Committees. Um, and you'll notice that this year, we are planning to do a budget presentation to the Northborough Senior Center. So that we can um, educate um, those community members on what is involved in the FY twenty-five budget. Um, and then we will have our public hearing, which I know everyone loves to hear um, at the school committee, probably the beginning of March. And then in April will be the Northborough Town Meeting. So, when we entered FY twenty-four, we did have a number of budget variables that we were considering as we were developing the budget. As you know, we were entering into negotiation with our um, three associations in Northborough. Um, we were also faced with a fourteen percent increase on out-of-district tuitions for our special education students. Um, our special education transportation costs were unknown due to a contract um, with Vanpool. Our energy costs, our electricity cost, um, contract rather, was up for renewal in December. Um, and we also uh, were awaiting a new contract for our heating gas um, supplier. And then finally, last year, our supplies and our material costs, we continued to see fluctuations in prices um, from everything. I know. We've had numerous conversations about copy paper, um, but other supplies and materials, we were seeing great fluctuations in. For FY twenty-five, um, we have finalized our collective bargaining um, agreements. So we do know what those colas are for the next couple of years. Um, we are hopeful that we will not see another fourteen percent increase in special education tuitions. However, we are always looking at those tuitions and are always um, trying to plan as best we can. But those really are some of our variables, as well as the transportation. Um, our energy costs, we have been able to finalize those um, contracts with our suppliers. And then um, we are seeing some fluctuations with our supplies, but really they have calmed down. Um, and then lastly, this will be our final year of having Esser money in FY twenty-four. So we are faced with the phase out of Esser funds. I just wanted to point out um, a slide that I thought was very um. I think interesting where you can see that the inflation rates are starting to come down. The last two years, you see that spike with seven percent and the six-point-five percent in twenty-one and twenty-two. Um, and as of August, um, the uh, US Department of Labor was reporting a three-point-two percent inflation rate. So we are starting to see some of our goods and services coming down. Um, but again, it is something that we are carefully watching. I also just wanted to remind the committee of some of the things that we did utilize our Esser three funds for to help offset our fiscal year twenty-four budget. Um, those items ranged from student and staff devices to curriculum for both um, elementary and middle school math. Um, science curriculum and also our L um, kindergarten curriculum. Um, and then also a portion of our ELA coordinator salary. So I have highlighted on this slide those um, items that will be recurring expenses in future years. And that would include um, student and staff devices, since we do have a replacement cycle each year. Um, our elementary math curriculum, I know that we are looking at some new materials and we are also. Faced, and you'll see this with a lot of our curriculum materials now with licenses versus having like a hard copy of a book. So that is something we really need to watch out for, for each year to make sure that we are budgeting for those licenses. Um, and then also um, screening tools that we do need to purchase on an annual basis. And the committee will remember that we did present this information to them last year about um, two different types of budgets. Um, the first is a level-funded budget. Um, and that would be where the same amount of funding is allocated from one fiscal year to the next. So obviously, if we're faced with the same amount of money based with colas um, and increases to many of our supplies. Service cuts would be needed. We would not be able to afford any new positions or programs. Um, because we would need to be able to cover our existing um, uh, cost obligations. And then the second would be a level services budget. And this would be the same services that were provided in the same, in the previous fiscal year. Um, those are continued into the next year. So the increase would be enough to allow for those services to continue. Um, so that we would be able to cover salaries and other costs. But again, no new positions, programs, or services would be included. And I would characterize the FY twenty-four budget really as a level services budget. We are going to talk about the um, FY twenty-four approved budget goals in uh, the next, I guess, portion of the meeting. So I'm not going to go in depth in those, but um, I did include these in the packet, just so that the committee and um, the community could see what the goals were for. FY twenty-four. And then I just wanted to give just a high-level overview of what our FY twenty-four budget process looked like. So when the initial request did come in from the schools and from the directors, um, in October of twenty twenty-two. You can see that it came in at thirty million, seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and sixty-four dollars. Um, ultimately, um, about, uh, let's say, two-point-seven million dollars later. Um, our final budget number was twenty-eight million, one thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars. Which is a four-point-nine percent increase um, over FY twenty-three's budget. Some of the offsets that we use, and these are historical offsets that we've used, are. Every year, we do receive um, circuit breaker tuition reimbursement based on the previous fiscal year's special education um, costs. And so for FY twenty-three, we did receive one million, one hundred thousand, three hundred and nine dollars. We also, um, this is the second year, we have received transportation reimbursement under the Circuit Breaker Program. Um, and that was for one hundred and ten thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars. And that is also for special education transportation. And then also, um, we do receive our special education IDEA federal um, grant. And that was five hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. So. We did have offsets um, that helped to contribute to that um, FY twenty-four budget of one-point-seven million dollars. And then finally, I just wanted to um, show the committee uh, where our budgets have been in the previous um, six fiscal years. So we did have a low of, of, in FY twenty-one, and that was um, right in the midst of COVID, um, of a one percent um, increase. And then last year would be the highest increase that we have had in recent years, and that is a four-point-nine percent increase. But really, we've really stayed within that three percent to maybe three-point-five percent range um, uh, over the past six years. And with that, I welcome any questions.
Thanks, Becky. Um. So, do you think there's any way, we, I know we have a level funded and level services, is there a way that we can get? Get rid of that word level and let's just like boost it, let's just, just like blow the roof off of it, you know? Not at all. I wanna, I wanna, I wanna get, I wanna cross off everything on our bucket list for our items and then.
Yeah, I think that I'll just add one thing as part of the school committee's budget process and the internal budget process that happens. Is really asking um, our leadership team um, to think about what do we need? Above and beyond a level services budget. We don't start with that assumption. And then through the process of really thinking about, you know, what does a school committee have for goals? And where do we wanna bring the budget in? And what do we wanna add? That really will determine um, you know, the budget amount. We just like to, you know, share level services and level funded in terms of the definitions, because people do get confused between the two. Um, but by no means um, are we, are we um, thinking, oh, it's definitely gonna be a level services budget.
Thank you. Uh.
So, car, car, what is it? What'd you say, Becky?
Car, carte blanche.
So that's a nice segue into, oh, sorry, Joan.
Oh, Joan.
I'd just like to say Bravo. Um, not having a financial background, but having an educational background. Finance was always something hard to understand when it first came on school committee. And you have done an excellent job. I mean, this is, be understood by all levels of financial backgrounds, and I think it's. It's a tool that helps us go into the town with the finances. And everything that you do is just absolutely wonderful and talking about this. And I like to see the goal that went by really fast, and that was re-establishing the strings program in fifth grade. That one went by real fast, that slide, but that's a good one. So uh, hopefully, as Kelly said, hopefully we can restore some of these things, cuz I think. Some of these positions have been lost through the years when we had really uh, low budgets that we could pass, even during COVID, when it was, what was it, at one percent? If it was maybe lower than two. So uh, and it's hard to restore. It's easier to make the cuts, but it's harder to restore. So. Thank you for all your diligence in doing this and uh, watching every single penny and seeing where we can get more money. So thank you so much, Becky. And your whole staff and Greg.
All right, um, so that, that's a nice segue into budget goals. So um. So what um, was presented in your packet was the FY twenty-four budget goals rolled up to FY twenty-five. My recommendation to the committee is that we have a uh, a virtual working school committee meeting. Just focus on the budget goals and the conversation around where we wanna head. Um, I think, um, I think we've done that for the past several years, and that's always a very productive meeting. And these goals are very important to help drive the process and help uh, us as a leadership team determine. Um, you know, what do we wanna accomplish or what can we accomplish and what are the school committee's priorities? Hi, Joan.
Uh, thank you. I didn't lower my hand, but I, question just came to my mind. When would you want this virtual meeting to take place?
I'll, I'll work with Kelly, um, the chair, and try to find a time that works for um, the committee members. Um, but again, I think it's, it could be a virtual meeting. Um, so typically, that will give us some more flexibility around when it can happen.
Would you say September, October? What were you, what's your plan? What do you think?
My, my, you know, it's, my recommendation um, would be, should try to have the meeting before October. Um, meeting if that's feasible and possible, so that we can go into the October meeting and have a real. Um, kind of deeper discussion and potentially an approval of the, the budget goals.
Okay, look forward to it. Thank you.
Yes, I agree.
So lastly, wrapping up the superintendent's report is the FY twenty-five budget calendar. So Cheryl and I sat down. Um, and kind of reviewed this with Becky. This is our um, best understanding of key milestones and dates. Um, this document is a dynamic document. We will change dates as they become more um, more firm. And we will add events that we weren't predicting as well. So. Um, but we, we tried to do our best to kind of forecast uh, key budget meetings and, and tasks. Um, through um, the town meeting. And that is the superintendent's report.
Great, thank you so much. Next on the agenda is the school committee members' reports. Um, I think Bryce has something to uh, report, and then I'm thinking Joan does too. Joan doesn't, then I can tell Joan something she needs to report. Bryce?
Yeah, so I just wanna report out to the committee on our uh, initial T, uh, town administrator screening committee. And, and kind of really that ended up in um, our finalist withdrawing uh, prior to a contract being negotiated. So we are putting back out uh, for recruitment and are going to, I think, our first. Screen neck, our next first screening committee for this next round will be late September, early October. Uh, so Kelly, potentially I'll have something to at least announce at the next meeting that maybe we've gotten started with the process. Uh, but we still have our interim town administrator uh, and our select board as um, colleagues for us at the government level.
Thanks, Bryce. Joan, do you wanna report about NEF?
Uh, the only thing with NEF is that they have the gala coming up, and uh, they're looking for volunteers. Uh, to help in so many different aspects of it, and uh, it's a great event. And uh, so if anybody in the audience or school committee members wanna help with something, just give me a. Uh, send me an email and I will put you in touch with Noel, who is the chairman of the NEF. The only other thing that I have is I got a, a notice today. I guess Kelly, you got one as the Northborough K eight member, and I got one is that I think the regional member. Is that on Friday, there is a superintendent's advisory committee meeting. And uh, it's gonna be virtual, so I guess between Kelly and I, we'll have a report coming back uh, to the next meeting. That's it.
Thanks, Joan. Uh, Kristen or Lauren, do you guys have anything? No? All right, sounds good. Um, moving on. Educational policy, there's none at this time. Policy development and or distribution, none at this time. Personnel items, distribution of personnel report and new staff appointments. It's a long letter, which I like seeing the hires. Not so much the resignations, but.
Well, our HR department is always extremely busy launching the school year and recruiting and making sure we have uh, exceptional employees in front of our students. So Heather has an update.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank Nina Wall and Elaine Chisholm in the Human Resources Department. Um, they've done an amazing job supporting our current employees and our new hires with a variety of, of different things. Uh, with benefits, uh, benefits, name changes, family changes, uh, employment verifications. Um, a- as well as uh, a lot of student loan forgiveness applications that have been cut. as well as a lot of student loan forgiveness applications that have been coming through recently. So as you can see, it's been a very busy hiring season. And we've been supporting the principals and administrators with the hiring. We have, on this report, we have thirty new hires in the town of Northborough. But I think it's also interesting to note that we support the three districts. And between the summer new hires with the E S Y program and the other programs that are happening throughout the summer, we've onboarded a, a total of a hundred and fifty three employees across the three districts. So I, I want to thank all of the HR folk, or the HR folks for their support. But I also want to thank our finance team, because once we onboard people, then we need to make sure that they get appropriately paid. So that's very, very important. So that is the HR update for tonight.
Great, thank you. Um, is there, what's outstanding?
Uh, as far as open positions right now, we have, we have eight open positions. They are in primarily ESP positions, education support professional positions or aides, and food services. And we're still actively recruiting. Actually, just today, I partnered with the senior centers in Northborough and Southborough. Because we're, we're looking for, to fill those positions, but we're always actively recruiting for substitutes.
Great. Thank you. Uh, any other committee members have any questions? Seeing none, we will move on. Thank you so much, Heather. The next thing is communications, M A S C joint conference. We kind of touched upon that earlier. The back to school newsletter and then Apple Fest. Greg, do you want to say anything?
Sure. So the back to news, school newsletter is kind of our, kind of launch into the school year in terms of our communications to family. So I will share that last year, we sent out district communications on Friday at four thirty P M. And we are kind of changing our, our time for district communications. District communications will be launched on Tuesday, Tuesdays at four thirty P M. And then each principal really is going to set the school-based schedule. The feedback that we received from parents was that it was a lot to receive all the communications on Friday evening. So we're dispersing it. And also, now that we have Parents Square and parents can download the app and get all the communications in a feed, that's a strategy that they can kind of maintain all the communications coming at them from the district and the variety of schools. And then Apple Fest, so obviously, Apple Fest is this weekend, which is an exciting community event for the town of Northborough. I just want to highlight on Saturday night from five to nine, there are fireworks and barbecue and a band and all sorts of great activities for our families. Also, I encourage families in both Northborough and Southborough to attend Friday, or Saturday evening to take a look at the progress toward the athletic complex. So that will be very visible and a great opportunity for the citizens of Northborough to see what their dollar is being spent on. And I think it's very exciting to kind of take a look at where we were getting approved at town meeting in April and where we are September sixth in terms of the progress.
Saturday, Sunday is the Apple Fest parade. Last year, I was the only school committee member who was able to attend and walk in it. I don't know if anybody else is able to. With my positive status, I know it's an outdoor event, but I don't know how comfortable people would be for me to attend and walk in it. So I just wanted to throw that out for discussion to see what people's thoughts are for it.
Won't be able to do it, but I also wouldn't blame you for not being able to do it.
Uh, Kelly, I won't be able to do it. I'm out of town.
Kristen?
I, I can try and convince my kids, whom I will like me in charge of, but usually they want to be on the receiving end of the candy, not the throwing end. But I can try and see if I can rearrange some things. Did you walk with your, with Proctor last year?
So, um, no, what I did last year is I, I walked with the school committee, so me, me and Greg. And I think Stephanie was with us, I feel like, maybe? And I don't know, or was it just?
It was just the two of us, Kelly.
Was it literally just the two of us?
Carrying the district that day.
And then we had a banner, and we had some Melican kids doing it. And my daughter came and she held the banner. So she held the banner. We did not have any candy. So my note was for this year was, I am getting and bringing candy to throw out because we just kept, kept saying, the candy's coming, the candy's coming. And people were like, ah. So we definitely need candy if you are going to be doing it.
Kelly, I reached out to Tugas and Dividians, and they're going to provide us with ears of corn and broccoli and.
Toothbrushes and.
And toothbrushes and.
Lauren, are you able to do it or no?
Um, I would just need to make sure I had childcare.
Push a stroller, you know?
You know.
It's true.
If there, if we can't do it, that's fine. I'll just join one of the schools.
You want to just join a school?
And I'll join usually whatever, I think, I don't know, whatever school leads it. And then, um, I think that is perfectly fine as well.
I feel.
Let me check in and see what the other adults in my, you know, party, family are doing and see if I can call my kids off on somebody.
Yeah, and Kelly, if you're the only person walking.
Yeah.
Other school committee members, I'm fine, because, you know, I'm fine. If you decide, I don't feel uncomfortable if you decide to come out and walk.
Okay, yeah. I mean, I could wear a mask too. My girl's supposed to be doing the cheer also, but that's also now up in the air because of the whole COVID thing too. So, but we will see, we'll see what happens. So, all right, great. So we will, we will talk offline about that and see if we can get some school committee representation on that. Actions on the open minutes, uh, meeting of June seventh.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to accept the open meeting minutes of June seventh, twenty twenty three.
Motioned by Joan, seconded by Lauren. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Joan?
Yes.
Bryce? Kristen?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
And myself as a yes, passes unanimously. Thank you. Future agenda items, the appointment of the school committee liaisons to the Northborough Financial Planning Committee. In our packet tonight, we received a statement of interest from a candidate. I double-checked with the town to make sure. So what happens is there is, for the financial planning committee, there are six members. Three are appointed by the town moderator, one is appointed by the school committee, one is planning board, and one is, well, maybe board of selection. I can't remember the other one. Anyways, I confirmed to make sure that the two open seats, one of them are in fact the school committee position. So it is our duty to put a recommendation forward for somebody. So, um, uh, he is going to be joining us next month at the meeting to present to us his interest. Um, the other thing for future agenda items, we will get the curriculum updates and a map out plan for the year. Greg and I will talk about that. So then we can plan out and we can have a concrete, we can share with the committee members, the plan for the year. Another thing is P T O presentations and school, school improvement plans. And I went back and looked at what we did last year. And the only change that I would suggest making is if we were able to do one a month versus pairing up two, I want to try to keep our meetings as efficient as possible. And knowing that we always have a lot of other presentations and a lot of things going, I think if we can do one, the other suggestion was not to have Lincoln Street or Proctor go in the front because they are new to the school with two new principals. So my suggestion would be, uh, starting in January, we do Melican, then Peaslee, Z, Lincoln Street, and Proctor. So, um, I'll talk with Greg about that. And if the other committee members are in agreement to that, we will suggest that to the principals and see if they're on board with that. Bryce?
Whatever you done, just for a few other future agenda items.
Uh, that's all I had.
Okay. I got a call from our new school resource officer, who just happens to be a gentleman that I'm familiar with. Uh, and he was asking how he could maybe come to our next meeting and just say hello and introduce himself.
I'd love that.
His name is Officer Sullivan, and I think it would be nice for that to take place and for the community to meet him as well. I know he is doing his best to kind of really better understand kind of where each school is placed in the community and, and the folks who are, who are there given any needs arise. I know this is somewhat for the regionals, you know, for our, our collective committees, but I, I do think we need to get the religious observance policy kind of back up to, to the radar here and, uh, not wait too long before we start making the necessary improvements to that, given the feedback that we received in the spring. Uh, and then I do, maybe not for October, but I would like to get another follow-up from the Northborough School Lunch Program regarding some of the, some of the information they gave us at the end of last year and, and how they're approaching the upcoming year. Uh, and also to just kind of engage them with the reactivation of the lunch committee.
Sounds good. Joan?
Um, and another one for next month, since we're going to have that virtual meeting in September for the October meeting, that we need to have tentative FY twenty five budget priorities. May not be in the final stage, but we would have maybe something to look over.
So you want to share the, share the budget goals? Is that what you're saying?
With a budget purse, and whatever happens after our virtual meeting, we may have to have discussion at the open session about it. Not sure, I'm just, I'm just putting it out there.
Alrighty. Kristen or Lauren? No? Good. Okay. Um, as always, you're welcome to email me if something pops up. Approval of bills and payrolls, I think where you've been doing good, Becky. We're on top of it. Good. And finally, audience sharing. We have a couple audience members who've watched this evening. I thank you and appreciate your attendance. Does anybody have any questions or anything they'd like to comment on? All right, seeing none. Thank you so much. Um, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, move, motion by Lauren.
Second.
Seconded by Joan. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote. Joan?
Yes.
Bryce? Got to hear it, Bryce. Okay. Lauren?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
And myself as a yes. Um, we are adjourned at eight forty nine. Thank you all so much for attending virtually tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Recording stuff.